Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Woodya Regional Vocational High School School Committee meeting for September 8, 2021. On June 16, 2021, Governor Baker signed into law an act extending COVID certain 19 measures Dr. Derry's state emergency. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022. Remote meeting provisions of this March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law per Governor Baker's extension. Public will not be allowed physically access to this school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted hybrid. For instructions to follow this meeting live, see on notice of meeting posted on woodyatech.org. Join me in the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions, student of the United States of America. We do remember that we are a nation, a nation of liberty, justice, and freedom. Do a roll call. Attendants. Mr. Early.
Present.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Mr. Irving.
Here.
Dr. Testaverde. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
There.
This is true. Mr. Haviland.
Yeah.
Mr. La Sage. And moving on. Public comments. Comments can be emailed in advance of the 6:30 PM start to elran@woodyatech.ma.us. All comments will be recorded to the record and all attempts will be made to mention them during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting will be mentioned at the following meetings. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of the minutes of August 11. Regular school committee meeting.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Haviland.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I move to approve the treasurer's reports of June, July, and August.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, discussion questions?
Do we have all three minutes?
Yes, they were.
All right, I missed August.
They were all set together.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yay.
Mr. Irving.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Haviland.
Yes.
Old business. There is no old business posted. Points and communications, student representative, Ryan. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all our school committee members. Boy soccer is off to a great start. Preseason went well, and the team started the varsity and junior varsity season this week with a victory over Lawrence Tech. Girl soccer is having a good start to the season. Program has over 30 girls, which is fantastic numbers for the program. Team opened up with a victory last night at home versus greater Lawrence Tech. Cross country has several promising young stars on both the boys' and girls' teams this year. After a year off, it's great to see the kids back out there on the trails again. Team opens up tonight this year over at Shawshank. Football team is looking good. Has a great start to the season. They kick off at home this Friday night at 6:00 PM versus Medford High School. Girls volleyball has been enjoying a successful preseason, looking forward to their opening game Friday at greater Lawrence Tech. Cheerleading is off to a great start, looking forward to a great fall season. And Woodya Tech clubs are getting ready for a great year and currently planning the annual club fair, which will take place towards the end of the month.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Attendants report. Switch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, for informational purposes, I have personnel actions and hires, a biology instructor, Spanish instructor, two health office aides, a guidance office aide, roof bus drivers, and evening school instructors. I also have one resignation of an H-back instructor. At this time, we have received some preliminary MCAS data, and we hope to be able to share that information with you soon at the next meeting, if not at the November meeting. On Thursday, August 16, Woodya Tech Foundation held its annual golf tournament. It was an absolutely beautiful event and day, a perfect, perfect day. Many in our Woodya Tech community played, we had 104 golfers and many sponsors. There were many that helped, but I want to say a special thank you to Kara Kosmos, Tia Gerber, and Lane Kevkus, especially for making, for their work to make this event a success. We were able to earn just over $16,000. I was on injured reserve this year, but I plan to play next year to get my title back. On Thursday, August 26, I attended a Zoom meeting with President Lane Glenn at Northern Essex Community College. We're continuing to look at ways that we can partner together. A year and a half ago, we had a plan to move a couple of our programs over to Northern Essex and develop pathways for our students right into college. COVID has put some of those plans on hold, but we're continuing to work together on our early college program. We currently have 115 students participating in Comp 1 and Comp 2 this school year. As many of you know, I received a call last week. A week before school opened at Habrel High or Habrel Public, they did not have enough bus drivers to get their children to school. Kara Kosmos and I met with Superintendent Margaret Rata and Assistant Superintendent Michael Fiffling from Habrel. We've agreed to help them out for no more than six weeks. The drivers will get paid the rate we offer, and the transportation will reimburse us for wages and mileage. On Friday, August 27, we had a professional day, professional development day with Kalise Warnum. She met with administrators, cluster chairs, and a few other interested participants. She spoke on equity and inclusion. She was a very engaging speaker, and it was a nice way to start the conversation equity inclusion in the new school year. On Monday, August 30, all staff returned to school. Kalise Warnum spent an hour and a half with us on that day. The first day is always exhausting, but there was such great energy and the staff were so positive for us being back in school full time. On Tuesday, August 31, freshmen and new students, I say it all the time, the best thing is the students are the best part. We clapped them into the school and the students seemed excited and nervous. This has become a tradition at our school. We had 332 freshmen enrolled and expected. We had one move to Lawrence and one student was stuck in another country, and we're expecting him tomorrow. So we'll have 331 freshman students enrolled tomorrow. On Wednesday, September 1, all students attended their first official day of school. All students wore masks, and it was a great, it was great to have everyone back in school. Today, I attended the Mass Hire Merrimack Valley Work First Quarterly Board Zoom meeting. That's a multiple. We're concerned about our CTOI programs in the evening, and the lack of students, Mass Hire has admitted into these programs. The students participating must be underemployed and/or unemployed. We've received interest with possible students that do not meet those categories, and we've made the decision to run these programs on our own. And hopefully get Mass Hire and CTI back online in the spring. I have a meeting with Mass Hire's executive director tomorrow to discuss further. I also want to bring up an issue that we're having with substitute teachers. We only have one substitute teacher every day this school year, and we have her covering a teacher on leave. The pay for substitute teachers has not changed in many years. Right now, a substitute teacher gets paid $90 a day, which is barely minimum wage for six and a half hour day. And I'm sorry for the short notice. Normally, I would bring this to you earlier. But I can't wait another month to ask for an increase in substitute teacher pay. So. I'm hoping for discussion about it.
What's the area paying as far as area schools?
It's about that, and we're all struggling to get, to get qualified help.
I mean, is offered 100, is that too little?
I think so. Yeah. I would, I would recommend 150.
150?
Yeah. If we're paying our aides 2850 an hour, that's $185 a day. So it's $35 less than what an aide would make.
I may come out of retirement.
Mr. Early.
This is a good thing to talk about. If you want good help, you have to pay for it. I don't even think $150 is enough. If you want to hold them for a year, six months or a year, and keep retraining them. I'm in the construction business, I'm very fortunate. I've had the same people for many years, from anywhere from 20 to 49 years. All right? I don't have one problem with any help. I only have 19 people working now, but you've got to pay them. If you want them to keep coming back, if you want to keep. Paying cheaper money, and I don't think it's going to work. I'd still think, I'd still. I think $150 is still low, even if you figure that out. If somebody's here six hours, you say they're here six hours, they really here eight to 10 hours. All right? So it's not a lot of money.
Well, especially if they're in for a long term, because there is prep involved, there is correcting involved. It's really not a six and a half hour.
No, there isn't a six and a half hours here, I'm going to tell you it's eight to 10.
Ms. Labella.
You're looking for a position for long-term substitute by just on an as-needed basis?
As-needed basis.
Are you going to form like a pool? Don't they have to be Corey and all that?
Yes. Right now, we don't have a pool. We've usually, we've been able to have a pool, but COVID has really changed things, and we really don't have a pool to really work from right now.
So the teachers that have substituted, the individuals have substituted or passed, but they've been like contacted, they have declined?
They've been contacted, some have moved into eight positions. Others are just not interested in working every day, so we do have a couple. We have one that is, only one right now, that's willing to work five days a week. And we have a couple, two or three, that are willing to work two or three days a week right now.
So, so you think it's a monetary issue?
I do.
I would say we. We boost it up to where it's not.
That'll help us build up the pool.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes, I'd like to know the superintendent's recommendation so that a motion can be made for discussion.
My recommendation is to move substitute pay to, instead of $90 a day, $150.
So I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Questions?
There you go. I kind of agree with Richard. What's the, what's the cost of always swapping people out and have to retrain new people when our holding?
Right.
I mean, there's a cost associated with that, too. So we don't want to be short-sighted and raise it up to hope to get people, just lose them again down the road, not too long after. I think it's a great idea to pay more than more, so we can retain that, so we know who we have and what we're going to get. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Early.
I'd like to know if you want to rescind that 150, and I'd like to offer 170, because you've already trained them. You've already gone through the Corey test, you've done everything. If you want them to keep moving, give it the 150, but I suggest 170. That's my opinion.
Can we use 170 for a long-term sub?
Yeah. For somebody that's in for, somebody for two weeks or more.
Extended period of time.
170 and the day-to-day 150.
That makes sense.
What's the rule after 21 days? Anything in the union? I know some, some systems, if you, if you go over so many days, you pay the rate of a bachelor's first step.
Yeah, we generally don't do that.
Mr. Haviland.
Yes, I was just wondering, in the course of a month, how many substitute days would you generally have?
That, that's a tough question because of COVID. Everything's changed, right? Because if one of my teachers becomes a close contact, you know, I will say last year, we were very, very lucky that teachers found a way to either remotely come into their classroom. And so we arranged coverages, but this year, that, that's not what the DUCY wants us to do. They want teachers and people to be in the building. So that's a tough question, but generally, we probably have three or four subs needed a day. If I actually go back on previous history.
Warrant. You, you were saying you call them when you need them. Would it warrant if you think your average is three or four, that you have, say, two that are permanent substitutes that could work?
Well, that's what we did last year, so we had people permanently in last year, and that worked really well. And that would be something we'd be willing to do, too, because we can always use people right now, so.
That's it, thank you.
Ms. Labella.
I can see the, the big picture. You know, we got experience training them. Is there a possibility to guarantee them so many days or hours a month or whatever? And if they're not needed, they can still come in and do something else?
I'd be, I'd be willing to have three, three day-to-day subs that come in every day.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. If they, if they're willing to do that, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that's, if they're not needed, they could be, you know, assistant superintendent.
Just be the superintendent for the day.
Well, I think, I think that would give people that are willing to do it more of, you know.
In the opportunity to hold on to the good.
Right. You know, give them, you know, give them some kind of benefit, you know.
Okay.
And I guarantee you X number, whatever you think is reasonable. And if you're not needed, they can still have you come in. At least they know it's, it's a, you know, permanent part-time position.
Right. But what, what with that also comes health insurance, too. Other benefits that the school district would be required to, to do.
Ms. O'Connor, do you have a question?
I did. What does it look like if, I mean, I know how I plan to vote, but if, if, you know, what does it look like on a typical school day if you don't have a substitute? When they're, when they're needed, you know, who steps in and what happens to the classroom?
Well, we, we find a way to make it work, right? So last year, we had administrators covering classes. We had aides, we had, we, we, we just made it work, you know? And I think that's my fear is this year, we don't really have those people in, in place. Because there's a real labor shortage right now, we just don't have the people to, to help us out with those things, so. Thank you.
Mr. Early.
If we give $150, the other community is going to go and probably give a little more. So why not give a little more, come in out of the chute, you don't have to worry about it. Like I said, after you train them, you have them all, Woodya, Woodya. Woodya Chrome, Woodya certified, I don't think it gets any better than that. And I'm not here to spend money, believe me. But you've got to do it to keep going.
Are we looking for, I'm sorry, are we looking for certified people or are we looking for? I don't know.
We certify would be wonderful, but, but people that are, are good with children, that want to work with kids and are interested in, in education, you know, sometimes it's a good stepping stone. I can think of five teachers here who were substitute teachers that are now instructors full time.
What about retired people?
I have a handful of those as well. So I have.
About a letter out to recently retired, yeah.
Yeah, I have a handful of recently retired people that are, are helping out. The problem, it's not a problem, because I'm happy to have their help. They generally leave for a couple of months in the middle of the winter.
That's where we need most. Mr. Tucker, do you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to amend our original motion, or should I say, I withdraw the second that I made for the motion and increase it to 170. If, if the maker of the motion would agree to withdraw, we can resubmit the motion for 170.
Is needed to amend it?
The, the motion was made for 150. After discussion, we agree, we agreed to 170. So we discussed 170. We discussed 170, so I will, I was hoping to resubmit the motion at 170 instead of 150.
So are there two options that we have upping the hard time?
Take a whole vote.
But isn't there the option to hire? Full-time? We.
It's starting to get complicated now.
It is starting to get complicated. I mean, we, we could do 150 for day-to-day, and then those that do a long-term position, as far as they're in a math class for 10 consecutive days, then we could up their, their position to 170, if that makes sense.
That would be an amendment.
That would be an amendment. I'm in favor of increasing it right off the bat. That would build up the base.
Or just withdraw the motion? And resubmit the motion?
But you second the motion, the person that made the motion has.
That's Dave.
I don't think he wants to.
One second, Mr. Haviland has a question.
I have, I have a question. If we are going to go with like the three full-time subs. You said there were benefits involved. Wouldn't that? The cost of the benefits, wouldn't that be enough of a plus over the standard I drop in once in a while fee?
It might be, and it might, it might be and it might not be, right? You know, it's hard to say, there's some people that have second jobs, right? So they only want to work two or three days a week, they don't want to give the full-time commitment. There might be others that want to give the full-time commitment, then you add in health benefits, you know, that's a real win for them.
Health benefits are huge.
Yeah. And it's expensive to the district, you know? Health benefits are a real increase to the district. So, I mean, I think if we do the, either the 170 and without health benefits, and it's day-to-day, I think that that should be, would be very good.
Well, someone to begin substitute teaching in 1969 at $50 a day. I would have liked to seen the 150 with, with extended time to 170, but I will withdraw the motion, let the, my colleagues decide what they want. Just one, one minute before we do that, Dr. Testaverde.
I'm mute.
I'm mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
I think the compromise position was someone who said they have the 150, and then if we are dealing with a long-term sub, 170. And I really am against having three people with full-time benefits, so I, I think we got to look at all of the aspects. $150 for a day's work is really good, and I agree with you, if they're on long-term sub, they're doing a teacher's job, so we give them 170. But I, I think that meets, it meets your needs, it makes it fair for everybody, and I mean, if you're going to give 170 to come in for one day, then you're going to give 170 for the people who are there full-time. They're doing a different job, so I think you make the adjustments according to the amount of work they're doing.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So.
Do you want to go with that?
Yes.
All right, I'll make it a motion that, that substitutes be paid not 90, but $150 a day. Long-term subs determined by the superintendent will make 170 a day, inclusive, that's it.
Second.
I think we've got a discussion, right? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Aye.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
And Mr. Havland.
Yes.
Thank you.
So next before you, I have my goals for this school year. You know, things are, are moving and we're pivoting and, and changing us as time goes on, but really, the instruction using our SO3 funds and trying to have students regain lost academic time. The facilities, working with MSBA in that project is going to be a pretty big project for this school year. And then obviously, professional growth and looking at diversity and equity inclusion as our, as our professional development for this school year. Any questions I can answer regarding my goals?
Ms. Labella.
Yeah. Have we seen these funds? The guidelines or the restrictions?
Oh, yes. A lot of it has to do with learning loss. With the SO3 grant, we're going to have to do a survey and those kinds of things for that, for that grant, but this one, we didn't really have to do much of that.
So, I mean, some grants that I'm familiar with in the past will state that certain amount of funds are used for payroll or instructional, some might should use for equipment, and there isn't one.
No. I mean, some of it can be used for H-back or PPE, learning loss, those, those are the guidelines, but it's not like percentages necessarily.
That's good.
Do we have a motion or a motion for that?
So. Second.
Any more questions or discussion on that? A roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Aye.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Haviland.
Yes.
Next I have is promotion and graduation requirements. The only change is for this is health and PE. We're not going to give our students any credit, it's a pass/fail class. And the reason for that is we are, we've changed our curriculum, and we met with our instructional subcommittee meeting earlier this month, or end of last month, to review. But the students will be pulled out of their vocational area one day, one quarter during the school year. So one, one day during each quarter this school year, and the students will be provided their health and their PE curriculum during that one day. So this is just a way for us to have students get more instruction time in the classroom, as well as be able to meet the PE and health curriculum guidelines. Are there any questions?
On the foreign language and world language, where, where do the credits come from?
What do you mean, where do they come from?
Well, I mean, did they have to redo something else?
They have to do something else?
2.5 instead of 5. So it's a semester or?
It's, it's only one period versus a two-period class.
Okay. Then the search states frameworks are in, with compliance with the state? Okay. I thought we offered more year-long history courses, not half-year.
Yeah, no, other histories are half-year.
Thank you.
Or one period, I should say. They're all years or one year.
Your ninth grade is, it seems like a full year.
Yes, because they, they do the. What do they call it, Gary? I'm running a blank. It's enrichment, so they do half their day in exploratory and half their day in English, math, science, and social studies.
Ryan, you remember that, Ryan?
I'm running a blank, geez.
Wow.
I know.
That was like four years ago.
Yesterday.
Uh, do we have a motion for the?
Move to accept. Second.
Any more questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havel.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on. Principal Aganos.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. Uh, I have for you tonight the school improvement plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Yes.
So about.
Yes. This is sort of a general question. Individual goals, you know, one point one, one point two. And then it says those individuals that participate. Thirty one of the goals says principal. My question is. How does you decide on the effort to do all these goals?
So are you talking, I'm sorry, Mr. LaBella, are you talking the responsible for the?
Yeah.
In that line item?
Like I say, like four point one of the strategies.
Yep.
Responsible person, principal, four point two, principal.
Yep.
Four point three of the people involved, principal. Four point four, principal, I mean, you're on thirty one of the thirty six.
Well, a lot of the a lot of the, as the instructional leader, a lot of the. A lot of those line items about instruction, as well as a lot of the safety. The principles, so I'm sort of involved in the surface of all of it, obviously with the superintendent. As well as the the coordinators that, you know, we meet every morning, so. I have to, you know, be involved in every single part of it.
My thought process is. Should kind of like pare down the total amount of goals. Put more of an emphasis on. You know, bringing these up for some of it, but you think it's better to have four thousand goals and hope for the best. That's just a question.
Yeah.
Looking for an answer.
You know, that's hard, right? Because the, you know, the.
Just reading it might get a little.
Yeah. And and I I'll have to say, it it is overwhelming. When I read this, I actually have a lot of pride because these are the things that we're all already working on.
Oh, I know that.
So it's it's, I don't think it's an overreach of what we're asking. What we're, what we do ask is that the teachers, when they develop their goals, to look at the school improvement plan, to look at the strategic plan. Develop their goals to meet these goals. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. I I was just concerned that, you know, what kind of stretching the elastic band for the.
Right. You know, as the as the principal, he is the educational leader of the building, so his his finger sort of has to be. In into everything, but he's certainly not out there alone doing it.
You're right.
Yeah.
Didn't know he was being. No, I look, he still has to run the school, so.
Right.
Right.
Right, we have, we have such a great team, you know, obviously, as you know.
Question the.
Right.
The the individual's effort, just saying. Thirty one things I gotta be involved with, whether it's a minute or two minutes, it's just. Oh, I think that's a lot.
Yeah. And like Superintendent Lynch said, that, you know, all these these goals are already happening. You know, obviously, the learning loss that the superintendent talked about, those programs that we put in. You know, with the with the grants that we have, that's all COVID related. You know, in the end, you know, with the free lunch, you know, obviously coming from the government COVID related. So there are few, I I I see what you mean. There are a few added extras in there, and it does seem overwhelming.
For instance, here's one, one point seven. The district will increase and expand its efforts to prepare students for college and career. Reading that's resulting in a positive placement and graduation rate. I think this is being done automatically.
Well.
So why would that be a goal?
If you see the extra, they add a one year provisional early college designation. So that that's actually a lot of work with the early college program, so you know, that the things that are highlighted are the things that are somewhat new. That are are new initiatives.
Well, I I just. It is a commendable. Pretty commendable to me. For me, I say forget it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I was I was just gonna say, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent, the principal's school improvement plan.
Second.
Any more questions or discussion, anybody? Okay, roll call vote, please. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havel.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Business manager, Karen Constance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. I have two things for you, and they kind of go together. The first is the variance report for the entire fiscal year ended. Uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And you'll see in the variance report, I included this time a column. And the columns aligned to the transfer request that I have also included for you. And the transfer will bring all of the district accounts to a positive balance at year end. And then the last columns in that variance report show what the ending balance in the financial statements will be after the transfer. So I would entertain any questions and hopefully. Ask for your permission, approval to do the year end transfer.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker.
I would like to. Uh, vote like a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented for discussion.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Mr. LaBella.
Well, I don't know if I can say this, but I think it's a remarkable. Vantage report that she kept it down a hundred and sixteen thousand. During the pandemic, yeah.
It's impressive. Thank you.
I'd like to commend her.
Thank you very much. It was a very interesting year, challenging. We had a lot of movement. Lot of movement, lot of changes, and I appreciate the committee. Understanding why we had to make so many transfers this year and and being supportive of the superintendent and the principal and I, so thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I will take the vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yeah.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, moving on. October annual agenda agenda items, the variance analysis. Then have an update of capital and equipment purchase and replacement plan, five year plan. And a review of vocational and technical programs. Subconary reports. Executive has not met. I do not believe we need a meeting. Special personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
Um, we did meet this past week on August twenty third, and. It was a positive meeting. We went over the changes that were requested for regarding the gym credits. And realignment of that program. We talked. Oh, about the incoming S R monies and it's and their funds and how they're being utilized. And that was it. I believe. Did I miss anything, Ms. Lynch?
Nope, I think you covered it. Thank you.
You have a minute. You're gonna make a motion for the minutes? Move the minutes to be accepted. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havel.
Yes.
Plan operations, Mr. Tucker.
Uh, plan operations met prior to this current meeting. Uh, we got an update from our superintendent of facilities. Just a few of the things were a potential update in the. Booster club down by the by the football field coming up the next year. The paving was done, painting was done, routine maintenance, electrical substations. Um, quite a bit was going on, and we want to commend our superintendent of facilities.
Mr. Hardy's done an amazing job this year.
Great job.
Okay, uh, salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
We have not had a meeting, and I don't believe we need one right now.
Not as of right now.
Okay. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Uh, we've settled most of the policy, I think, by August, so we have several things in motion. We are looking probably for a meeting in October. A brief meeting to discuss the admission policy. At that time, we'll have updates from the state. So I'm looking at the school committee nights, October thirteenth, so if we can meet at six o'clock. That sound all right?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. LaBella, question.
Mr. Irving. You be able to send a state into even more efficient state? That's all. Members that want to have it, you gotta wait for the.
We talking about the, we talking about last month's vote, or we talking about the emission policy?
The mission policy.
Superintendent will see that we get that. Once it's it's still, the dust hasn't settled at state level, I don't believe. So once she has that, we can make a recommendation for our. Our school.
So I have asked the state for an extension. I have asked the state for an extension for us to do the admissions policy. There I we've started to write a rough draft. And so that's what I plan on presenting at the October thirteenth meeting is our rough draft. You know, and hopefully we'll move forward, certainly anyone is welcome to to look at the rough draft.
That's all. Thank you. Uh, meeting dates. The regular school committee meeting next month is October thirteenth at six thirty P M, and just. Also scheduled policy meeting. Before that, at six P M. There's no new business posted. There is no executive session posted.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
No.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havel.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.